If it's a strong mayor system and the mayor doesn't like the policy and the mayor's the one that can control the job of the department head and tells the department head, I'm thinking of letting you go, we could be in trouble. You know, I, um, and, and just generally, I worry about, can I give you one of my other spiel's against the strong mayor?
No, I'd love to hear it. I love talking about strong mayor and getting angry about it. So give me some fire.
We're rolling. We are rolling.
All right. This is a real, real, real thing. Real, 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 real thing.
I've, I've, I've got plenty of time. I have nothing else going on today.
We're in the wedge neighborhood right now, 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 right now.
All right, y'all set?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, this is the Wedge Live podcast. I'm your host, John Edwards, and joining me today is Councilmember Cam Gordon from Ward Two. He's running for reelection this year. Welcome to the show, Cam.
Great to be here.
Okay, so let's get right into the, the public safety, uh, charter amendment.
This episode was recorded before the Minnesota Supreme Court's decision to allow voters to decide question two on creating a new Department of Public Safety.
It's up in the air right now. Um, a Hennepin County judge tossed it, I think, for the third time. You guys on the council have gone back and forth with this judge with different language a bunch of times, and it seems like nothing has been acceptable. Now it's at the Supreme Court. What, what is your reaction to all of this?
Wow, well, there's lots of reactions. There's emotional reaction, so it's very frustrating. It actually looks like this judge has argued against this from two opposite sides. Um, we've come back with language, um, addressing all, all the concerns, and yet she was still able to come up with a reason to keep it off the ballot. It's hard not to think she already had that opinion about it, that it shouldn't go to the voters ahead of time. It's especially frustrating for me because this is something I've been trying to do for years. I actually ran on changing the charter about police oversight and control of the department, this, this provision in the charter in 2017. And I, um, in 2018, proposed a change that would have at least gotten rid of the, the provision where the mayor has complete control and authority over the whole department, which is the part that I, um, objected to most and seems to get us in the most trouble. But anyway, I don't want to get too far into the weeds on all that, but I'm really hoping the Supreme Court will let us put it on the ballot. I think that if this is kept off the ballot, um, everybody in Minneapolis is right to be outraged that our system didn't seem to work and doesn't seem to work in this instance. Unlike the prior ones, we got it there plenty of, in plenty of time, but also this was a citizen petition that came forward. Uh, the city council was obligated to get it on the ballot because the number of signatures qualified for it to be on the ballot. And so to have a judge, um, keep it off the ballot seems like a real overreach of any possible authority in the judicial branch.
Watching you go back and forth with the city attorney and we, we can switch to the strong mayor thing now about like, what is the effect of the strong mayor charter amendment? And they were unable to give you answers. Uh, obviously they brought forward that first draft of public safety language that was rejected by the judge from the other perspective, uh, that it was, it was too much of a warning label. Do you think you're getting good advice from the city attorney's office? Because as a viewer, as someone watching from home, I'm extremely frustrated that I, and as a voter, I can't know how they're going to interpret the strong mayor thing once it's enacted. We have to wait to find out?
I think there's some great people in the city attorney's office and some people really know law really well. I think sometimes on these issues, um, it gets particularly challenging to understand, um, what kind of advice. One of the problems that I've seen often with attorneys is they're enormously risk averse. They, um, seem to, to a fault, want to keep things private and not go on the record saying things as if they're anticipating some kind of legal battle off into the future. So it hasn't always been, um, the most helpful. I'm not a lawyer and it's hard for me to second guess things. I can certainly read the charter provisions in the strong mayor and I can interpret it in a common sense kind of way. Somebody might, um, with my, um, limited education and expertise. Uh, and I think that will probably be consistent with what would be played out into the future. I'm not sure why they're so cautious all the time. I think sometimes city staff might feel caught when there's a, um, kind of a disagreement with elected officials. Um, and, uh, that sometimes makes them be extra cautious when it's unclear exactly where the, um, the city as a whole might want to go in what direction.
Right, and they have two roles there. They probably have many roles, but two of their roles is to defend you in court, but also to provide you with advice and hopefully like some, some guidance for me as a voter, like what, what is the impact of the strong mayor charter amendment? So.
Yeah.
That was my frustration.
Right, and we also have the city clerk weighing in a lot on that too and trying to explain that, those impacts too. And, um, and so that gets challenging. I remember hearing at some points, like, oh, it's not really going to change anything. And then at other points, well, it will dramatically change and improve everything. So that, um, and those are kind of interpretations on if it will improve or if it won't improve. It's clear to me, if you want my opinion, um, and it was even clear to everybody that the executive committee will go away. That's the one committee that the mayor sits on with the council. That's the one, uh, thing in the charter that actually brings us together in a room to discuss things. And a lot of times we talk about, um, department head appointments and evaluations. And I've seen that executive committee be used very, very well in the past, uh, especially when we decided that it was worthwhile, um, doing evaluations of our department heads and doing reviews so they could get input in the middle of their term even from, um, policymakers. But also that's an opportunity for us to talk about other issues, even sometimes including, um, labor negotiations and those matters. So it's, um, it's a really valuable committee. It's also really clear in the, um, strong mayor provision that once a department head is appointed and they'd be appointed to four-year terms, so essentially aligning with the election of the mayor. So the mayor could come in and, and appoint all, or propose to appoint all new department heads. And, um, if the council approved them, they'd be appointed. And then the new proposed charter says the mayor can fire them whenever he or she wants to and doesn't have to ever go back to the council to even let them know, um, which just seems like, um, a setup for, um, the council to be ignored if the mayor decides it's not really important to have them included in things from departments, um, which sometimes we have seen, especially with the police department, as it is where the mayor does kind of have that authority. If you have a mayor that says, oh, it's really not that important, chief, for you to go to the committee meetings or agenda setting, um, that can make a, a big difference. And if you have a mayor that says, I expect you to get along with the chair of the public safety committee and, you know, be attentive, that makes a big difference now because the mayor has such authority over the department. But I'm worried that if the mayor has the ability to, um, just the ability to fire department heads anytime, they're going to be much more inclined to see, oh, the mayor's the one that I really have to answer to and talk to and communicate with and follow instructions of, because now that I'm appointed, he's the one who's really responsible for my job. He's the boss.
Yeah, that's a really important point because we have an example of how strong mayor works with one, one department in particular in Minneapolis, and that's the police department. And so it's been hard for me to understand how we come out of this previous term thinking, well, there, there's so many people who think, well, we can, the charter commission, for example, we can scrap any, any plan to restructure things like police and create a public safety department, but it's very important that we restructure all the other departments and have them answer to the mayor. Okay. So give me the pitch for Cam Gordon. What, recently, uh, someone sent me a doorbell, uh, photo of you door knocking them, and I'm wondering, what did you actually say to them as you, as you're knocking doors? What's your pitch?
I don't remember exactly what I said to them, but I let them know who I am and why I'm there. Well, and then we have a discussion, um, and I think we even talked about, uh, Wedge Live at the door there. So, um, uh, cause I think they were big fans, so they were probably imagining they could send you that photo.
They were very thrilled. They were very thrilled to see you on their doorbell cam. Uh, my friend said, uh, you popped up on his phone. I guess the doorbell cams are hooked up to phones and he, he was excited to see you when he came down, but, uh, tell me what you're telling.
We did have a great conversation. Um, I, um, really excited about, um, my job. I really love, uh, representing the people of Ward Two and serving on the city council. I know that we've really had a rough time in the last year and a half, um, probably the worst, um, year and a half in the city's history, certainly, um, since I've been in the city, which is my entire life. It's the worst a couple of years, but even during that couple of years, you could really see the people of Minneapolis pulling together, um, rising up. There was even a great awakening. I think we're at the cusp of an enormous opportunity, kind of on the, um, heels of the murder of George Floyd, where people are really understanding that, um, we need to address the structural racism and we need to fix our system. Um, I think that I have a proven track record of helping to, uh, bring people together to move on values that we share. Um, I've run from day one with a vision based on values of social and economic justice, grassroots democracy, peace and nonviolence, and ecological sustainability. Um, and those are my guideposts. Every day I show up at work and I figure, how can I use this agenda, this meeting I'm having with somebody, this conversation to help move on those values and move them forward? Um, I also ask me, myself, um, questions, uh, about, well, how can I make life better for the people of Ward Two? How can I serve them better? And how can I be their voice in City Hall? Uh, and then I think about not only how can I make their lives better now, but what can I do today about this decision in this place that will actually make Minneapolis better into the future? Um, and I think I bring, um, bring kind of that, um, style, uh, with me as well as those values. I, um, think we have a pretty big opportunity in this next term to move on some pretty specific things like this public safety, transforming, reimagining public safety. I think it's also going to be a pivotal year because it's going to be the next two years of implementing the Minneapolis 2040 Plan, which I think has an amazing set of 100 policies that could really make a big difference, but we need to start and continue because we've already started implementing those. Um, and I helped develop some of those policies and work on those policies and understand that. I also think within that and maybe within both of these things, we've got opportunities to do some major work in terms of how we can lead on climate change, uh, and make Minneapolis an example for, for the country and others about how we can do things as a city and as a locality that can move the dial on climate change while we're addressing, uh, environmental injustices of the past or environmental justice. So those are some of the things I talk about at the doors, but I always want to hear from other people because I have to say that, um, the best things that I've done, um, as a council member have often come from folks, um, out in the, the ward or other activists who come in and say, here's an idea, here's what we can do. So while I'm sitting around there thinking about my values or my constituents and the future of our city, I'm always open and ready to see when there's, um, an opening. I might think I've got a great idea and I'm banging my head against a wall and somebody walks in and says, I've got an idea how we could maybe move on this thing over here. And if it fits what I'm doing and there's momentum, I'll go for it. I'll keep planting seeds, like I have done for, for years and years on things like rent stabilization or, or, um, even the racial equity issue, um, people weren't listening to and thinking about that, and now it's incredibly popular and they get it. But I'll keep doing that, but I also want to, um, keep moving where we can move and where we're ready to move. And I think I'm ready to do that. How's that?
That, that's.
I usually don't get that much time at the door, so.
Yeah, well, we have, we have forever on this podcast. So what's a, what's a big thing or a surprising thing, I think I should say, because I, I'm sure a lot of people want to talk about public safety, but when you're talking to people, anything surprising you about, uh, people's priorities, what they're thinking about this election year that you, that maybe we would not think was a big issue to people?
Well, I don't know if there's any big issue that's common. Um, besides public safety, people will talk about, um, climate issues and what are we going to do about that? And they also have specific things they're working on. They think it's great or they want to talk about what they've done to their home. Also though, a lot of people want to talk about the problem with homelessness and the encampments, but that's not really surprising either. I will get some people who pay more attention to certain details and they'll bring up something that's relatively small. I'll also hear about that, um, property on the end of the block and why is it like that? And what can we do about that? So there's more different details, I think, that people will bring up and are concerned about. Also in Ward Two, there's conversations about how are we going to rebuild after some of the destruction, um, that came last year and some of the, the looting and fires and burning. And so that's, but that's not surprising either. So I can't really necessarily think of a big surprising one. I will say there was one person at the door the other day who, um, asked me about, um, garbage and recycling and wondered why we can't move to pick up recycling every week, um, and compost and do the garbage every two weeks. And so I, um, and that was an idea that I'd had a while ago. That was something I think the mayor Hodges wanted to move towards. That's what they do in Seattle. Um, and so that was, um, surprising that that was at the top of her list, but it was, um, a real thing and I absolutely got it.
So when I think of you, I think of how nice you are. You're too nice. I remember you going on, do you know John Stossel? Do you remember that guy, that interview that you did?
I do.
Yeah, he kind of, did you realize who he was when you went on his show?
I knew he was a famous kind of, uh, uh, news top person and I'd seen him on some TV show, I think, but no, I didn't really understand. I was doing an advertisement for Jason Lewis, which is what it looked like afterwards.
Yeah, he's like a libertarian, uh, guy and he kind of ambushed you.
Gordon tweets things like, "Time to end capitalism as we know it."
That would be good.
How would it be good? Every alternative to capitalism brings stagnation and poverty.
And I think that we can take care of each other better.
How did you feel about that?
Well, I thought it was all fair game in a way because I'm an elected official and I consider it my responsibility to talk to people and be public about my public work. So that's, the free press is really critical for our whole system to work and I try to be open and accessible. I did get irritated by a couple of things that he did. So it was a fun kind of debate because he was trying to poke me on stuff and obviously. So once I got into it, I realized, oh, this guy has a real angle, um, that he's working. And he thought that I was wrong about questioning capitalism at all. And I think what he really was intrigued in is I think I put some tweet out at one point that said, "Capitalism as we know it isn't working," or something like that. And then when he wanted me to offer him some evidence, um, I pointed to a few different things. And I said that capitalism brought us the housing crisis. It brought us the opioid crisis and it's bringing us climate change. It's failed us. And he carefully added, and I said it, I think twice or maybe even three times, those three things. The opioid crisis was carefully snipped out of every time I, and maybe even the climate change one, I'm not sure, but, um, I, he had some issue that he, he thought, uh, the op, me claiming that capitalism had anything to do with the opioid crisis or else he had a conflict of interest and he had to protect the pharmacies or something. But that showed me that, um, this was not a, a journalist at all. It was somebody who had a agenda and a message and didn't want to maybe, um, allow me to admit a truth out there because it might somehow jeopardize his agenda. I don't know, but that, that's the one thing that really irritated me because it, I'm willing to talk to people and have that honest debate and those discussions and get to bring up my points, but then to have it broadcast and have a very important point I wanted to make edited out, it just made the whole thing seem like a lie and a joke and, and, you know?
Yeah. I read a lot of your tweets and you are often replying to people who have just insulted you, which I think is, is generous of you. You're engaging with people on social media who, uh, aren't the nicest people. Why, why do you do that? What, what is it about you that makes you want to engage with, uh, people who've been very mean to you?
That's a good question. I don't know. Um, there's, and I'm not quite sure what the right strategy is, so I welcome people's advice. Um, partly I think, um, the more we can bring more people along, the, the better off we'll be. So I, a lot of times I don't necessarily give up hope. In fact, I ran a very close race the first time I was elected and I tried to reassure folks that it, you know, who weren't going to vote for me, that once I'm there, I'm going to try to represent you too. That's going to be my job and maybe I'll try to prove that, um, I can be effective in some way and earn your confidence. So I do like to get consensus and even, um, when people object to me, I like to try to give them a chance or give me a chance to convince them or get them back closer and to see if there's any common ground. I think trying to unite people is great. Sometimes though, I'm, when I'm replying to some of those comments, my audience isn't necessarily the person who made the comment. I'm concerned about the people they're going to influence and win over and kind of draw over in their direction. And, and sometimes they're saying stuff that's maybe not quite accurate or maybe doesn't really reflect where I'm at. And I'm thinking, well, this could be a good communication to make to others out there who are kind of wondering.
Okay.
Then another piece of it is probably trying to role model something generally for our discourse in the community. Uh, you know, I used to be a teacher and I'm a parent and, you know, leading by example is a thing we can do. And it seems like I do have a choice there where I could, um, ignore it, which I do ignore some of them, believe it or not, or I could snark back with some really clever quip and slam them or something. And sometimes maybe there's a little snarkiness to my replies. I admit that, but also it's like, okay, let's try to take them at their word and maybe this was more of a serious comment and, and we'll just try to say, yep, we could have a conversation about it. There's definitely a few people I don't think I ever replied to anymore though, because that was so counterproductive.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call this, because you're being wily about it, I think. You're not, you're not being taken advantage of. This is a Cam Gordon social media rope-a-dope strategy. You're trying to get punched in the face, right? Trying, you're making a point. You're, you're, you're going to win in the end by getting punched in the face. I get it.
Yeah, maybe something like that.
You remember that, uh, 2018, the first public safety charter amendment you did? It was about mayoral control in 2018. Uh, and Joe Tamborino, the TV lawyer was pretending not to understand, and it's the only time I've seen you get angry is when you approached Joe Tamborino to like gesture wildly at this paper, like, why didn't you read this thing? You're saying that this doesn't exist, but here it's right on this paper. Uh, I don't know what the question is, other than I wanted to talk about you getting angry at Joe Tamborino. Do you have anything to say about that?
Probably not my best moment, but I think it was authentic. That was very frustrating, that whole debate, I think. So I think I was frustrated and I was kind of angry. But I also had the paper in front of me. I had, there was a pile of it over on the dais. So I remember that now that you're bringing up. I think I got up from the dais, took the thing and went into the, um, audience and handed it to him and showed him what it was and that it was there. Cause I just wanted him to actually know, um, that it was written down and he could read it and he didn't have to be confused about it. So yeah, I don't know. But you're right, I was frustrated. I do gesture too much sometimes. One of my, um, kids points that out to me sometimes when I'm talking and I get my hands going. Yeah.
So what, what is the public safe? I don't want to, I don't want to be pessimistic, but what's the public safety agenda look like if we don't change the structure and, and integrate all these public safety functions into one department? If we can't give the city council some policy control over armed law enforcement, what do we do for the next year if we can't pursue that line?
Yeah, I think we have to get creative and I think we have to try to keep pursuing other things. You know, we've already, if you look back at last year's budget, when we did the safety for all budget and we created this new crisis response group, it's going to be starting, I think, this November. So behavioral crisis response teams are going to go out to respond to 911 calls. That's, we set that up in the coordinator's office. 911 is still located in the coordinator's office as well, and we voted to embed a mental health expert in 911 to help sort out and identify the calls where we don't need an armed response to. And of course, if they get there and it's dangerous, they can call for help securing the scene, just like paramedics do. But that, um, is something we could continue working on. We have, um, traffic control that is outside of the police department now, and we're exploring how we could have traffic control, do more, um, traffic safety enforcement. They, um, we've got some trouble with state law, I believe, because they can't do moving violations or those things. And I'm not even, you know, we, we think maybe they can take a report of an accident and those things. So we can keep doing some of those kinds of strategies, I think. Another one that we could do is decide we're going to, um, expand something similar to the downtown ambassador program. So where we can create, um, in our commercial corridors, unarmed, trained, um, problem solver troubleshooters. You've probably seen the downtown ambassadors and now they have a livability committee too, where those people have a little extra training and resources where they can go to where it looks like there's somebody who might be in trouble or they're, they're homeless or maybe they're overdosing or something like that. So we could easily, um, help invest in some of those pilots and programs where they would be welcome or needed and work on that. We also do have a police oversight ordinance that I'm amending and trying to draft now. Our police oversight system, the civilian review authority was, um, essentially destroyed, um, several years ago. It might've even been 2012 and Don Samuels authored the, the ordinance amendments that destroyed it. It basically became an arm of internal affairs or it became some civilian staff from the civil rights department were brought in to work with internal affairs and do the oversight that way. It's failed us miserably and I think we can redo that ordinance and get the police out of the, the civilian oversight of the police and bring back a stronger, um, review authority. Of course, all they could ever do because of the charter, um, and maybe others, some other state law restrictions is give advice back to the chief or the mayor about discipline. And that's all without the charter change, they'll still be able to do, but I think we can still improve that ordinance. I'd actually also have some other ideas. I'd like us to move an early warning system or an early intervention system or just call it performance review over to civil rights and, and have analysts there have access to all camera footage, all complaints, all private information and review officers regularly so they can identify those who are at risk. Again, the way the charter's set up now, they would just communicate that back to this, to the mayor and the chief about officers at risk, but it could create a way to catch some of these folks early. I've been really pushing for some kind of implicit bias testing. We do this training and nobody knows if it's really working because we never really test it. And there are tests now that could help with that. I don't know if we could implement that anyway. You know, it, it, it becomes kind of some games, um, that seem unnecessary when I think of other departments. So another thing I've thought of doing, we have an ethics code and the city ethics code applies to all city employees. So whether you're a housing inspector, a firefighter or a police officer, you're not supposed to take city vehicles and, um, use them for your own side business or city computers or whatever. So, um, I have had this idea, we could have a code of conduct that would apply to all city employees and we could develop that and see if that could be something that could be a tool that we could use potentially so that we could have some kind of oversight on all of those. But just like the ethics code, when there's a violation, it gets referred back to the head of the department if it's somebody under the head, if it's a department head, it goes to the council and there's an ethical practices board. So I don't know if that would work and it just seems like such a, um, all of those things seem like extra work when you think about what we could do if we had our own, um, more modernized, up-to-date Department of Public Safety that had policies set by the council, um, as well as the mayor.
Right. So what do you think about this? Right. So what do you think about this uh, make, all of Minneapolis, the mayor's pack and the mayor himself and, and other people trying to make this an election about the chief, who is an appointed department head? There's no guarantee he will be there next year. He's, he could cash out his pension at any time, take another job as he wanted to do earlier this year. Uh, that's something that's been frustrating to me. This isn't about the chief. This is about our government structure here. Should be about public safety. You have any thoughts?
It's disappointing. I think it's a strategy. I think there's a sense that um, Chief Aradondo is popular. Um, it has confidence across the city to some degree. And that rather than actually talking about the real change that's going on by talking about it like that, it would make um, it would help their cause, I guess. Um, I don't know. I've said it many times. This is not about Chief Aradondo. It isn't at all. Um, and the way it's written, the chief could still be called the police chief and, and, and would be until his term ends. And then if he doesn't want to get reappointed, that would change, but um, because his term, I think, I think ends at the end of the year. Um, I should check that though. Don't, don't.
I think you're right. I've heard that. I've heard that too.
Yeah. So there's that and then there's the, so it's like an argument and a fear to play up and play on. It's uh, unrealistic here and I don't, I worry about this, these independent expenditures that seem to have so much money to invest and they can just print whatever they think will, will work and make their case. It confuses folks. Um, they start calling and asking me. I'm hopeful that some of these people will look at them and they'll go, oh, it's this again. Because some of the first mailings that came out were just so outlandish uh, and far-fetched and even did something where they quoted somebody who then later came out and said, um, I actually don't believe that. I've been misquoted. It's wrong. So that will help discredit the whole organization, hopefully. I think that's my um, hope. I think a lot of the people in Minneapolis are savvy enough to look further than that and look deeper than those things and hopefully they will overlook those things. It's, it's really hard to know um, what all will happen with the new department though. So I guess it is kind of a, a little risky and people wonder and it looks wide open. But knowing city government and knowing government, whatever we do is going to take long. There's going to be studies, there's going to be reports, there's going to be chances for input. The council's going to be responsible for drafting an ordinance that will show the details of a new department. And that's going to take a long time and then there'll be a public hearing and there'll be input on it and there'll be all of that. I tell folks that they should look at the um, state department of public safety. That's one that the government did and everybody um, respects that. And they actually have a chief of the state troopers um, that's there within it. Or you could look at Denver or St. Louis where there's other departments of public safety that cities have created. And what do they look like? What's in there and what isn't? And so that could help people understand it. But I know it will take us some time. I think um, the first thing we would do is we would appoint a commissioner of public safety and they'd be the project manager who could then help um, you know, spend their time developing a timeline and information that we needed and making the first reports and coming back. So um, this, I think there was one of them that even acted, or there's people that say like, oh, they'll have to enact the new ordinance, I mean, the new charter change within 30 days. So then we know more police and it's like.
The line is, the line is from their lawsuit, and I can't believe the judge bought this. It's very frustrating is that the police department uh, just disappears on December 2nd, I think was, was the argument from uh, the Samuels lawsuit and the, the judge bought it.
Yeah, it, the, the, the three or two words, maybe Minneapolis Police Department would be removed from the charter.
Right.
But the police department and all the staff would be in place. They're all funded. They all have contracts. They all have jobs. And it would keep going. And I don't believe that even if, when a new council was seated in January, that they'd make big dramatic amendments to the budgets or changes like that. Um, so um, no, I think, I can't believe that the judge bought that too. I think, you know, it's hard not to think it was disingenuous kind of.
Yeah, because I, yeah, you, you want to assume a judge is uh, smart enough to know, to know. That's why we have judges to figure this stuff out. So it's hard to believe a judge couldn't figure that out. Have you seen that chart showing that uh, MPD wasn't defunded? You probably know this. You're on the city council, but uh, it's a chart of police spending in Minneapolis over time. It's, it's on the city's website and it goes up and up and up. And then it kind of flatlines a little bit, but still up over the last couple of years. And it completely contradicts what I think is the conventional wisdom here is that the, the police department was deprived of resources and staffing, but that's not the case. The police department has fallen apart. I wish we were directing a little more concern towards having a department that just imploded over the last 15 months and figuring that out rather than pretending as though it was denied staffing and resources, which is just, you know, provably not correct. The cop, a lot of cops just decided they didn't want to do the job anymore.
I think you're absolutely right. I think I voted for a budget increase to the police department every year I've been in office. And we did a budget amendment where we brought, where we decreased a little bit in 2020. And that was because so many officers left. There was no way the department could possibly spend all the money we've given them. And um, although maybe they could use some of that to cover some of these um, lawsuits. But it, the same, yeah, that, that's the same even with what they got this year. There was funding to hire two new cadet classes and start training a third one this year. We, even you might remember this strange budget amendment that I voted against. Um, I think it was for $500,000 last December, like a big emergency. We need half a million dollars so we can hire outside agencies to come till the end of the year and help us. We couldn't even spend that. So they got that, even though I voted against it because I didn't believe that they could spend it and it would make any sense and there was no plan with it. It looked like it was for show to go out saying, to help sort of distinguish and make people feel like they were pro-police and anti-police council members. So I, because then they couldn't even spend that money, although then, then they probably have it um, sitting around for the following year. And we haven't really contracted out to other agencies. I actually would think if we were ever going to contract out for other agencies, it probably shouldn't be the police department that develops the contracts and does those contracts, because I'm not sure that they could, I don't know. That would be, that would be another strategy to use, but um, yeah. So that um, that problem is they haven't really been able to make good use of the funds. And for whatever reason, if it was beyond the control of the mayor or the police chief, I don't really know. But you're right. The department has um, hasn't been very functional and been very effective for a long time now. And I know there are great officers out there and they're working really hard. And I even hear about them from people who've been crime victims and all of those things. And, but we've lost a lot of officers and it's really been a struggle. Um, and I think you used the word imploding and I can kind of see why that would make sense and that's a thing to call it, but.
Yeah, the, the $500,000, it would, there was a lot of drama and headlines around that. And I think the, the chief at the time, maybe in the council meeting, used the phrase, our city is bleeding. There was a whole lot of urgency around it. And then in January, the Star Tribune and a few other outlets just reported that, oh, by the way, the money hadn't been spent. All, all the, the drama and the controversy about who would or wouldn't vote for this $500,000. And then it ends up being, well, yeah, we couldn't spend the money. It did feel like it was for, for headlines at the time.
Yeah, I think really what you'd want is a department had to come in and say, I have an agreement. I have a plan. This is what it's going to cost. I've got this agency that's going to bring in these resources. Do you think it's a good idea or not? Instead, we were said, um, I haven't really talked to anybody or made any arrangements for anything yet, but I would like you to authorize a half a million dollars so that I can start the conversation.
Yeah.
Outside the regular budget. Sorry, go ahead.
Let's switch it up and talk about housing. Uh, you supported the 2040 plan. You've been willing to experiment on housing. I, I think we, we have disagreed on things like uh, you, you put forward the intentional communities thing and you wanted all these additional requirements put in, like a, like a chore wheel. I think you got made fun of for that. But like you, you at least initiated the conversation and uh, you have supported things like rooming houses and others. Let me ask you about rooming houses first. The, the way the policy was passed or the ordinance was passed was uh, it has to be run by a, a nonprofit or a government entity. I thought it should have gone further. Tell me why it shouldn't have gone further? Because I don't think we're going to build very many of them. I don't think it's going to produce very many of them if you limit who can operate them. So why shouldn't we have gone further? And maybe would you support going further in the future?
So my sense of two, two main reasons not to go further. One was so that we could get something passed and supported and accepted, not just by the council, but also by the communities. So that it wouldn't be from day one doomsday scenarios that everybody was freaking out about. And number two, maybe because sometimes I look at what could the potential worst unintended consequences be? And I saw there was some risk. Um, I could play out some scenarios, maybe unrealistic in my mind about how somebody who was, and maybe these would be fine to sell, but I didn't want to suddenly create an opening for the luxury end, like hotel-like rooming house that somebody could get a student loan to help pay for. And maybe because they had a party room on the roof and a workout room and a pool and a theater room, they'd be paying $2,500 for a room and a hot plate or whatever, you know? Maybe they had a gourmet kitchen they could use on the.
Twenty-five hundred dollar rooming house? Come on, Cam Gordon. That's not realistic.
I knew you'd say that. And I, and I said it too. That's not realistic, but maybe it would be 1,200, maybe it would be 15. Maybe it would never happen. But they do do some pretty small units, you know, micro units are popular. And of course it works for people maybe, and then they like having the amenities. So that's already kind of going on. But I was also worried that it could create some financial incentives for some people to do something that would backfire on us. And then we'd have people saying, this rooming house idea should never have gone forward. It absolutely didn't work. Here we have this guy who's chopped up his house into this rooming house and he, he's making a bunch of money off it and it's substandard and it's not good. And I wasn't, we could have even gotten those comments and pushed back before it got to the council. And I, you know, you're right. I did this thing with intentional communities to get around the, this, this is similar. And it's maybe one of my defects. I know you see it as probably a defect. But the intentional community thing was also to say, let's try it out with safeguards and get rid of relatedness so you can still live together. But we're just going to make you register as an intentional community with the city first. And we can have, we can take away that right if you violate some other stuff. So it was a stepping stone and it didn't even last long because the intentional community registration idea, um, it worked. There were a few places that took advantage of it, but since then we've changed the zoning and the housing code. So family relatedness isn't there anymore. So people can do it anyway if they're not even an intentional community. We did it a little bit with ADUs too, as you recall. ADUs had to be connected to an owner occupied um, you dwelling unit or house. And now they, in fact, that was something I put in the comp plan and then I worked on the amendment. So now they can just be done as rental property because we tested that out for a while and not that many of them were built. And people said, yeah, that's, I think that's going to be okay if it's just rental. So that's my way of saying to you, um, if our rooming house ordinance um, plays out as um, benignly as the intentional communities and as the ADUs did, we can probably look at expanding it again. Lastly, I'll just say that the entities that were talking to the city and talking to me about wanting to do rooming houses were nonprofits and, and Hennepin County government entities. Uh, so they were the ones who wanted to and acted like they would build it and that they could and they could do it at an affordable rate. It's really, for me, I want them to be affordable. And I know that maybe naturally they all will be and that's just the way they're going to work. But this way is just going to say that we, we, we're going to use this. And I think the county's ready to move forward on something, but um, it's, it was maybe a compromise I made with myself. I don't know. But also um, because I listen carefully to my constituents and it's like, okay, what are we ready? What step are we ready to take now? And I have to tell you, to get to the intentional community step seemed to take a long time and lots of other people talking more about it and the city kind of growing up and getting ready to do this. Because I was talking about taking family relatedness out of the code. Well, so long goes 2006 probably, but so I'm glad that we got there. Maybe it's a little bit more of an incrementalist than I should be, but I am that. We did the same thing with emergency shelters and overnight shelters. When I first got elected, they had to be in a church synagogue or a mosque, a place of religious assembly. Um, we finally opened that up to allow them more places. Not that many actually got built. Uh, the emergence and we allowed smaller ones even in residential areas and they didn't, weren't happening really. Now we've opened it up even more. Um, but it's a, it's a way to do things. And I'm hoping with this um, single-room occupancy rooming house thing, we'll see some opened even in neighborhoods um, where there's lots of low-density residential and they'll say, oh, that actually works here. This is a good mix and this is fine and, and this is what we want our city to be doing. And more of them can be built and we can review it in a year or two.
Let's talk about Cam Gordon's experience, because you've been serving since 2006, right?
Yes.
And I think Lisa Goodman is the only one who has seniority on you. So thinking about all that time, and I learned a lot listening to you, such as the uh, back in 2018 when you're like, uh, the mayor has authority and the city council can't do, uh, can't direct the police department to, to do any of this stuff. You talked about your history with that. Tell us about something surprising that you have learned in all your years on the city council. Is some insider-y stuff that would be surprising uh, for us to learn that might help us better understand how our government works.
Oh, wow.
I know it's, it's a lot of years to go back through and think like, what have I learned?
I was probably so surprised by a lot of things uh, at the beginning. I was a little bit surprised at how um, we were such a, uh, we got all our authority from the state legislature. I guess I should have known that before I ran, but um, it, and it's been very frustrating. So I um, I've tried to do some small little things that seem to just raise the hackles. I, I tried to ban um, because maybe it wasn't the most popular thing I did, but people were asking about it. And I happened to think plastic pollution is a really big problem. So I um, was able to get the city council to agree and, and we banned um, single-use plastic carryout bags. And then before the law went into effect, so this was like a, a, maybe I was surprised at how nimble the state legislature could actually be. I think we passed it in January and I was going to have it go into effect at the end of May. The legislative session met. The um, Grocers Association lobbyist was over there, as far as I could tell from day one, um, calling for a preemption. So it's been kind of surprising at, at least for a while about how the state government can um, tell us what to do when they want to and they're, they can be willing to. So they then preempted it and said, no city can pass laws and, and that would ban the use of single-use carryout bags.
Right.
Even though I think Duluth was ready to consider the same thing and things like that.
Who knew the plastic bag lobby was so strong?
Yeah. Well, they were really strong when they came to Minneapolis, but then they quickly um, left. And it turns out it's a national thing. They, they were, they've been working on legislatures all over the country to prevent that because other cities have done this too, even though some states have done it um, done the ban. So that was um, that was a little bit surprising. I'm sure that there's been things about taxing and it, you know, that we only can do sales taxes when the state says, yep, you could do a sales tax for that. So we have to go to them to get special permission to do, implement some sales taxes. So that's been um, it's been a little bit surprising. And it makes you feel cautious about what you're going to do um, and how many steps you can do to get there. If you have a legislature, you think that's going to come after you.
Right, which has come into play this year with the rent control thing. Where you, council had to create like uh, how many different pathways were there? Like four? And who knows how many of them could stand up in court? And only, only two of them will be on the ballot. The rent control question has two pathways, right?
Right. I think there were three pathways. Um, so the third one just had one pathway, which was going to be all out and out referendum. Um, and now it's, it's the council that can set it up, but we can either pass one on our own, or we can also go out and take it back to the voters. Cause that's a little bit of the concern with the way the state law is written. Do they mean the ordinance itself has to go to the voters or just the authority to implement an ordinance? So we're taking both of those paths. Yeah.
State, state is putting up all those hoops. Did, did you read the Strong Mayor, that, that report that the charter commission put out interviews, anonymous interviews with department heads regarding the Strong Mayor Charter Amendment?
I did. I believe I read all of that portion and they are very coy about who they talked to and even how many.
Right. Yeah.
Unclear whether it was two or 20.
Yeah.
Maybe one, but they acted like they used plural. So I'm assuming it was more than one. And you don't know whether they were current or former. I read it and, yeah.
I think it was intended to be current. That, that was my interpretation at the time. It was they, they spoke to those currently serving, but who knows? They were all anonymous. Do you think it's accurate to say that department heads kind of resent the city council, having to answer to the city council, or maybe not resent, but chafe or are uncomfortable or just don't enjoy having to, to answer to the city council? Like, is that a real thing? Is there a rebellion going on at city hall that we need to know about?
It's hard to know. Um, cause quite honestly, I think a lot of city staff, including department heads will, um, be guarded about maybe what they say to council members. It's always been a little, little bit of a frustration for me that I can't be a fly on the wall and be in all the offices and all the work sites of everybody and see how it's going. Cause you walk in the room as a council member and it's like, oh, we gotta switch gears to this now. A little bit, you know, you can probably understand or your viewers can understand where I'm coming from. I think it, it probably is challenging and anybody that's maybe ever worked for a board of directors or more than one supervisor somehow could maybe relate to some of that. It does seem like there's a lot of department heads that are able to figure it out and they're able to be clear about it and they can listen to council members. Um, and they might even think it's really important because we represent different parts of the city, different viewpoints. So getting that input, getting that is really valuable. And quite honestly, in the whole scheme of things, the council member's job is very much about community engagement and reflection. So there'll be ideas that they're coming forward and staff, um, really good staff will want to know, um, I wonder what the folks in that area would think of this plan. And oh, I can check the council office because they're in touch with the people and they go to meetings and they know them and they live in the area. And so we can talk to them and then I can even say, well, I'll do some more research on that, you know, and see how they, you know, people might feel about that. And that's a role and we, it's a really important role that we can play as council offices and council members to be the community engagement and bring that voice in there. And that really, um, if you're open-minded and creative, uh, department head, you realize, well, that's gonna make it a more successful plan and a more successful solution or whatever they're working on. Um, you know, I think it, it probably is maybe challenging when you feel like, oh, I have to answer the phone. I guess, I mean, I don't really don't understand. I don't think it's as, I think it got exaggerated, maybe, maybe by who they talked to, or maybe because they were listening for what they wanted to hear. You know how that happens to us a lot? You're listening to what you want to hear and it's probably easy to complain sometimes about things. I will tell you that I think, and it wouldn't necessarily change that much if, if in terms of council members potentially being a bother to department heads. Because if there's a problem that comes up, and this is one of the things that I think is appropriate for council members, we do want to make sure that we're working with and through department heads. We're not going to try to reach way down and start bullying or whatever, persuading staff, um, when it's inappropriate and, and because they should be having a supervisor. It's a very hierarchical in city hall still and that. Some departments are much more open than the department head will say, oh, go talk to Beth about that or whatever. And, and they'll know and that they'll be included. But others aren't necessarily. So it's a big job for the department head is overlooking all the staff and then also kind of being the main connection point to the elected officials. And so they'll hear that. But that could continue even if it's a strong mayor system. And if you've got, um, a council member, maybe who stretches those lines or those limits and wants to try to use some other strategy to influence staff. So I'll just tell you this, the, the real way you get staff and department heads in a department to do work, if you're on the city council, is you bring something forward to the council and you get the council to pass it with seven votes and the mayor signs it or else you override a veto. And then you, this is, it's really effective because you say, well, this is what this city wants to do now. They want us to do this study session, or they want us to do that study, or they want us to do this policy. And, and a lot of times it will, um, be a directive to staff, but it's not a directive from a single individual. We can't direct the department to do something as an individual.
Lisa Goodman can. Lisa Goodman can.
Well, and sometimes I'll say, some, I'll have some people that says, just use your position to do it. And it's like, you know, I will ask, I will inform, I will, might advise about something and I'll let them know. And a lot of times it's, oh yeah, we better get an inspector over there. Let's do a traffic study about that. So it's not that they don't listen to me ever. But if you, if, if it's a big thing and they think there may be especially if there's going to be some difference of opinion among policymakers, um, it's just the best thing to do is we're gonna get the council to go along with this idea. We're gonna, you know, take our next step together as a council and go ahead. And that's how most controversial things come up. I will say, um, part of it is the fault of the elected officials. So, uh, you know, if we're divided up here, or sometimes what it looks like is that the mayor's side is, is, is not getting along with the council side. And that will make it hard on everybody. It probably makes it hard on residents out there too. I mean, I don't know. They, so we need to do a better job probably of finding our common ground, emphasizing the common ground and trying to make progress on the stuff that we're all working on together as much as we do about the stuff that we disagree on. And sometimes lately, this looked like we were more interested in, oh, let's really shine a light on our differences. And maybe it's not all our fault. You know, we had the civil unrest and we had the presidential election and then we have forces out in the community. So I will say the forces out in the community, I think some of them have invested a lot in saying, look at how divided they are. Look at the differences and they're so, you know, spread out all over the place and even lying or not being completely honest about some of the views that everybody has so that they can make it seem like, um, it's, I don't know, more, we're more divided than we are. Not to say that we aren't divided and we aren't playing into that too.
But I think the mayor's pack, the mayor's pack calls that infighting on the city council. The incompetent city council is infighting. That's what the mayor's pack says about it.
Okay. Well, there you go. That's one of the outside forces.
Yeah.
And is it, is it really the mayor's pack? Well, you get to go with that.
I call it that because his, his communications person from 2017 is the campaign manager for all of Minneapolis. Did you know that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So it's the mayor's pack. We can be honest about that. It's the mayor's pack. It's totally, totally coordinated as far as I'm concerned. Cam Gordon didn't say that. I said that. Okay. So let's talk about neighborhood groups and equity funding. I, I enjoy you, Cam Gordon, and I'm endorsing you strongly this year. I do, which is why I have to bring up something that we disagree about. Uh, you remember the proposal to do equitable funding of neighborhood groups? I think it was Steve Fletcher who, uh, pushed that.
Yeah. And I think we made some progress there. I think I wanted to, um, keep the base funding higher than some would have liked. So some maybe didn't think the wealthier areas needed neighborhood funding at all. I'd actually still like to raise it a little so that there's some funding.
But the more you raise, the more you raise the base, the less you have to distribute in a more equitable way.
True. Unless you raise it so high that even the equitable distribution would mean the lowest neighborhood got a base bigger. But you could also build up the base and then build up the equitable fund. So I'm not saying I don't want to add more money to the other options. And we got it very complicated. I think now there's three or four different ways you can access some funds and some have partnerships with outside entities, which I think is a pretty nice idea. That I, um, you know, I, um, got my sea legs at a neighborhood organization. So I got involved during the neighborhood revitalization program in the Seward Neighborhood Group and saw how it was working then. And then I served on the board and then I was president of the neighborhood group for a while. And then on the council, I also see how effective neighborhood associations can be really helpful and useful. And if they're doing outreach and they really have the pulse of the community or they can get feedback on issues, it really helps. I was, um, one of the first people who talked about doing diversity audits for our neighborhood associations. So even when I was on mine, I was very concerned that you wouldn't have any, um, parents with young children who were usually serving on it. You wouldn't have renters on it hardly at all. It was mostly white. So it was like, okay, it's not very representative. Um, it could do, should do a better job. And actually the, one of the first things I did was try to do a diversity audit of our boards and commissions when I got elected. And we did that first, actually sort of as a way to tiptoe into this and said, well, let's look at our own boards and commissions and see what our diversity is there. And, you know, lo and behold, they were mostly older, mostly white, probably mostly male. I don't remember all the details. Um, probably mostly homeowner. And they still probably are, even though we've been doing them for a long time, but, um, we could diversify them. The same with the neighborhood associations. And I know that there's been a lot that haven't been necessarily functional all the time and they're, and, and those kinds of things. But I do have a deep seated belief in grassroots democracy and getting ideas from the ground up and bringing them in. Um, and I think getting that input at the local level is really important. So I was also part of adding a, um, policy in the comp plan that says geographically designated neighborhood organizations are a useful thing and we should work to improve them and make sure they're more representative and give them some money into the future. So I, I think I wouldn't, I might even be considering an amendment to the budget this year to try to get them up to base funding of $25,000 at least, um, going. I will, to a lot of neighborhoods associations credit, they're doing a pretty good job. I think a lot of them of staying alive, of trying to get more equitable and diverse and also funding a little bit on their own and figuring it all out. You know, back in the eighties and nineties before NRP, they weren't funded by the government hardly at all. I think they, for a while they had six planning districts that got a little support, but.
Here's, here's my line. Uh, I think the reason I believe in equitable funding for, for more equitable funding for neighborhood organizations is because white people in single-family homes can pretty much organize themselves, like at a certain degree of privilege. For example, like I'm not a wealthy person by any means, but I do a pretty good job organizing with other like-minded people without money from the city. And I, I feel like there are certain neighborhoods with people who they just don't need that much help organizing to have their voice heard. Like they don't need any help at all. They, they have an outsized voice in the city as it is. And so to shift that money around in a more serious way to target it at people who have hardly any voice at all. I, because there's a limited pool of money for it, I think is, is a good thing. That's my line. But you, you don't have to respond to that. We've spent quite a bit of time on this, this.
And I don't, I don't necessarily disagree. I think it's like, what should the bottom be? Um, and I did, I was worried about zeroing it out or leaving it at 10,000.
Okay. Uh, and quickly, because I know we're, we're getting pretty long here. So going back to Strong Mayor and policies like complete streets and renter first, uh, these are things that the council has directed departments to, to consider and to use in, in undertaking their work. Like, do you have any, any idea if these things still apply under a Strong Mayor system? Is it completely at the whim of the mayor, whether complete streets actually still applies?
Well, I would assume and fight really hard to say city policies that were passed are city policies and it should still apply and departments are implementing them. So I think makes complete sense. Now, the piece that will get tricky is some people see, oh, they have legislative authority. So that means they can pass policies like that and they take effect. Of course, if, if it's a strong mayor system and the mayor doesn't like the policy and the mayor's the one that can control the job of the department head and tells the department head, I'm thinking of letting you go if you can't change direction on your complete streets policy. This is ridiculous. Speed limits should be 35 everywhere and you should, we don't want bump outs or whatever they would say. Um, we could be in trouble. You know, I, um, and, and just generally I worry about, can I give you one of my other spiel's against the Strong Mayor proposal?
I'd love to hear it. I love talking about Strong Mayor and getting angry about it. So give me some fire.
All right. Well, you've probably already thought of all this, but this is the point that I try to make to people sometimes is the way that you see mayors, um, win elections and operate is different than council members, partly because they're representing the whole city at large. And in Minneapolis, for decades and decades, um, people who are in politics know where the votes are. In Minneapolis, we have this thing that we call a fertile crescent and we still call it that. And if you look at the maps of where the precincts are, where the turnout is, and you do your, you know, some nice artwork with the maps, you can see that there's something from southwest Minneapolis through Kenwood and through downtown, and it even stretches over to a little of Ward Two, a little bit on the east side of Prospect Park. I mean, maybe there's some high voter turnout near the river up, up here too, on the west side of the river. But they called the fertile crescent. So when those park board people are running citywide, they really focus there. When mayors are running, they know they have to focus there. If they're gonna door knock anywhere or talk anywhere to people, they do it in those high precinct turnout, which also happened to be the wealthiest areas of the city and still to this day, the whitest areas of the city. Um, and so of course mayor is paying attention to that and thinking of that when they're making decisions. Um, and it's the easiest thing for a, at-large person to say, I don't really have to bore, worry about the near north side or Phillips or the center of the city voter turnout there is so low, it's not going to make any difference to me anyway. And you could even see how this played out in the last Mayor Earl campaign. Um, and you can even remember RT Ryback was from southwest Minneapolis, Betsy Hodges was from southwest Minneapolis. Jacob Frye, when he ran, spent so much time over there and even used the, uh, police killing in southwest Minneapolis as kind of a launching, um, because people were so upset about it there. Um, and so that's, if it's, if the, if the decision making is concentrated in the mayor, they'll be listening a lot there. Also in my experience, mayors, and this is probably good, um, spend a lot of time paying attention to downtown Minneapolis. What's happening downtown? All those property taxes are coming from downtown. Also the businesses downtown can hire the lobbyists and hire the other people and the lawyers to come in and meet with the mayor and talk to, they actually have staff who's, you know, are there to interact and do all of that. And so I think it would be such a kind of a, a shift and it's such a big risk to concentrate more authority in city government in somebody who's really there more representing those two parts. It's so valuable to get together with representatives from all over the city who have an equal voice. So even if hardly anybody turns out to vote in, um, Ward Six, their representative still has an equal amount of power and authority on the council for, as one vote, just like the 13th ward council member, maybe who had six times the voter turnout or whatever. So anyway, um, that's how our policies get to be better. In fact, because we can talk with one another and say, that's not really going to work in my part of town. Maybe we should try that or oh, my people are upset about that. Do they want to do this? And we get better policies. So.
And the conversations are happening in public. The conversations that you're having with your colleagues are happening in public, right? Whereas the mayor, who knows how those policies got set? Who knows what the debate was, what the pros and cons were, or why the decision was made? Nobody knows. It gets announced on the local news, but with the council meeting, you're hashing it out. You're like trading punches with Lisa Goodman and we know exactly how a decision was arrived at because we could see it.
You certainly see more of it than you would with the mayor. And this is what the, the big problem with the police department. You see how policies are made by a couple of texts or something, um, that's in a response to a, a headline in the Star Tribune and all of a sudden, oh, we have to do something about no-knock warrants and let's do this little thing about no-knock warrant. And then the mayor can make it. thing about no-knock warrant. And then the mayor can make it seem like a bigger thing about no-knock warrants or whatever is going on. And we made a big policy change. And we didn't actually get to have an open discussion. So somebody could try to poke holes in it and look, read the policy change and go, well, wait a minute. You know, just because you yell when you're walking through the door, it doesn't really make it, I don't know, what we want.
I have seen you, not, not recently, but during council meetings, early in the pandemic, you seemed a little mournful about not having that in-person city hall experience. I don't know if you, you probably still have some of those feelings, but talk about how city hall and the work of the city council has changed for the worse or for the better. What, what are we losing by not having these in-person meetings?
Huh. I think we're losing a lot. So I'm still a little mournful. I think it's valuable being in the same room with people. I don't know whether there's some kind of difference in terms of communication that happens because you can see somebody's whole body and you can read nonverbals about it or kind of have these intuitive feelings, but it's really helpful. But also you can imagine how in the course of a day, people showing up at the office, going to the break room, standing around, suddenly having this idea and they can walk down the hall and catch somebody who's there. It was really helpful. So we could see, you know, we office together in this long L-shaped hallway with different offices. And every office has two staff and the council member. So you can walk down the hall and you can say something. You can actually talk about nothing related to policy and just get to know somebody a little bit. And so you, you have an outside relationship that's intact, separate from the next battle, maybe you're going to have on an issue or whatever, which is really helpful. But it lends to a better, I think, working environment. And we can also head down the hall to, to the mayor who's down at the other end of the floor we're on and go there and visit. So we're missing all of that kind of easy conversation, chance to check on things. It isn't, you know, phone calls and texting and emails and setting up a Zoom meeting to go over an issue. And you also, we're missing the in-person meetings where you could have a staff person and a couple of council members. We're doing some stuff and getting the briefing that way. So it's not just the council member offices, but it's with staff or go up to the coordinator's office. So that's really hard. I also think there's something significant about meeting in the chambers and in this, and working in city hall in the historic building of the people. So it gives you a different sense, even walking in there, you know, it's, it's like, oh, I'm doing something special and important. I'm coming into this historic building now and this is the people's building and I'm doing the work for the people and there's history here and all of this. It's different when you're like in your corner basement room, worried about your dehumidifier or something, wearing your blue jeans or whatever and your button up shirt. So, and when you're watching us on the meeting, sometimes you could tell that it feels different. So when we're in the chambers, we're, you've been in there, right? Many times. Right. You're at this dais. It's, it's kind of intimidating and I don't really, when I got there, I didn't necessarily like it. I, my old hippie greenness said we should sit in a circle on the floor or something, you know. My preschool teacher, we should open with a song. But anyway, you're at the dais and you, and you feel like you're in an important room and you're making important decisions and you should, you know, be stately. I don't know what the right word is, but there's something formal about it and you should be on your best behavior and you should treat everybody decently. And we lose a little bit of that when we're talking to a image of somebody on a screen miles away. And, and we don't even see the audience in the room. We don't even see our colleagues sitting next to us. I can't even catch the eye roll of, you know, Kevin who's by me when I'm talking, when, when I'm looking at the screen and I think I'm just addressing, you know, the fire chief or something, because I could see his face maybe because he's the one doing the presentation. So it's not, not doing our best work. I think it's probably contributed to some of, some of the problems we've had, maybe finding unity more and, and responding better to the crises. I don't know. People out there have probably had their own challenges and difficulties, or maybe distractions from having to work at home and do things from home. And it's been a challenge for me and I'm sure for the rest of the council and city staff too, to be doing this. I really want to be able to get back to a time when we can meet in person and people can come and sit in the room. We used to be able to fill the room with, we used to, people used to be able to fill the room and they could sit there and watch us.
Right. And heckle you. They could heckle you?
They, they could heckle, but they could also hold up signs or they could roll their eyes.
Now we got this starstick bullshit to deal with.
Yeah. So, and we don't have that and it's hard. Even when they want to come in and protest, actually, there's locked doors. So they can't even get to the door of the mayor's office. They're kind of outside on the elevator, putting up posters or shouting. And, and so it's also really hard for people to access probably their representatives. I do coffee shop hours in the ward and I'll meet with people anywhere and I go into the office a few times a week and I can let people in to talk to me. But it's different. And when that, you know, when it's, when we've really been careful, there's no receptionist there. There's nobody who's answering the door, even let you in when you come. So it's not good, open government. It looks like it's closed and inaccessible.
As you describe the, the shabby situation of speaking through a webcam from some corner of your home, some unimpressive corner of your home, it feels like, and comparing that to city hall, the majesty of city hall, it feels like you're saying that the Wedge Live podcast is not as consequential as, as going to the council chambers at city hall. Is that what you're saying? This is not consequential?
I think it could be very consequential. And I'm not in my basement room here. I came upstairs to the dining room and there, but I'm here in a beautiful setting and I feel very important.
You have a pet, by the way? Do you have a pet?
I do. You know, well, I have a dog. Oh, let me see. Do you want to see her?
Yeah, let's see the, let's see the dog.
She's sleeping on the floor. Come on, Billy. Well, I'm not sure I'm that good at my camera work. There she is.
There we go. I see it. Looks good. That's a good shot.
Thank you. I should have had that for the whole interview.
Yeah, just your voice and your dog's backside. That would have been fun.
Look at the tail when I talk. All right.
He knows you're talking about her.
Yeah.
Okay, we've made it to the final question, Cam Gordon. We're 76 minutes in. It's the final question. It's, it's recommendations. I want three recommendations from you, things that are making you happy. Cause we've spent, you know, 15 months or so slogging through. That's it. It's, it's been stressful at times and people need some things, some recommendations for what could make them happy. So what, what is making you happy? It could be like a walk in a specific place, or time with your dog, or a book, or a movie, or a game, any experience, three experiences that are making you happy that you could recommend to other people?
Okay. Those were all good experiences. One thing that I've done some of this summer is canoeing. I have a canoe and I have, one of my sons really enjoys canoeing. And so we will go pretty regularly somewhere to canoe. We can canoe on the river or we canoe on the lakes. And that's nice to get out in the boat and just paddle around. It's usually in the city, actually. We don't go very far. I do really appreciate that I live right near the Mississippi River and I can take a walk down there and go down to Riverside Park. That is something that's really bringing me joy. I like that. But I'm supposed to name three things?
Yep. We need three things. Two of them were river things. I don't know if that counts as one thing?
Canoeing and walking are two distinct things. I canoe on lakes, let's say that.
Right. You win. You win.
But they were both park-like things. And I do like, I do really recommend people get out in nature if they possibly can. And there's lots of places to go here in Minneapolis. I also like playing music. So I will do that and it will make me happy. So people will need an instrument to do that, or they could just sing and whistle. But.
What instrument do you play?
I play guitar and piano and I'm not that good necessarily. So you don't necessarily have to have any follow-up questions.
Were you in a band?
Pardon me?
Were you in a band at any time in your life?
Oh, I was.
What was it called? What was it called?
Oh my goodness. You should do more research. No. I was in two bands. One of them was called the New Psychonauts.
Okay.
And the other one was called The Swinging Combo. I also used to have a little children's music business where I would go and I would perform at small schools and preschools and childcare centers where they, and I would even be the music teacher for some of them. So I'd come once a week and we'd do group music things. So that was called World Songs. It's a little business of mine. But I know that, yeah, that's risky for you to find out about that piece of my history. But it's pretty interesting.
What's risky about it?
Well, you're really good at coming up with snappy little things and, and making, and helping us all laugh, laugh with you.
I, I enjoy, I enjoy making fun of you, Cam Gordon, and I enjoy that you are a good sport about it.
It's just fine. You could do that. I really appreciated the sequence of my beard growing.
Yeah, that was interesting. This is a good opportunity. If I will put that on the screen when I put this on YouTube, is your beard, your beard time lapse at the beginning of the pandemic. What, did you regret that? Did you regret starting that journey?
No, I think it was just fine. It was really funny though, because I was thinking, oh, nobody will really be noticing, you know, I'm at home, I'm not going into work, but I'm on the screen all the time for all my meetings. But so it's like, of course, everybody noticed. It's not like some of us could just maybe do that and not.
Looking into a webcam, we get a perfect like headshot of you and your, your burgeoning beard, if I can use that phrase.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're 80 minutes in, Cam Gordon. I don't feel like we wasted any time at all. We hit, hit a lot of stuff. Is there, you have any final thoughts?
I don't think so. You know, I, I just really appreciate that the work that you do. I have to say, one of the problems with city government is, and maybe not so much right now, although there's a lot of things nobody notices. But we don't have a lot of local coverage and we don't have a lot of people watching what we're doing and then sharing it out to the world. And maybe actually the pandemic has helped us get a little more of that and all the social media has. But I really appreciate that you are willing to be focused on local politics and on city politics in particular. It helps us do a much better job, I think, as elected officials, and it helps the rest of the people in Minneapolis help, you know, encourage or make us do a better job too. So I really, really appreciate all the time and attention you give to it.
Thank you, Cam Gordon. I love ending the show with someone being very nice to me. That's the best way to end an episode. My guest for this episode has been Cam Gordon, who is the council member in Ward Two in Minneapolis. And he is running for reelection. He's going to be on your ballot this year. So get out there and vote. I am your host, John Edwards, and this has been the Wedge Live Podcast. Thank you for listening.